Al, thank you for your input. Norma, do you have a little?
We do.
Oh, here it comes. It's coming around. Pass this around. Detra, while we're passing, can I go ahead and get you to start the introduction?
C.C. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this day, and thank you for the men and women that have come here to work on items that are for the good of our community. Dear Lord, please bless us with wisdom. Dear Lord, please bless us with compassion and understanding for each other and for the people that we serve. Dear Lord, be with each and every person in this room and with their extended families, and bless them with happiness and pass these things in your beautiful name. Amen.
Man, thank you. Okay, let's get to council items real quick. You did items, we've got pretty big schedules, so proclamations, everybody's here, is that correct? Are they?
We have one proclamation, EMS, and then you're going to recognize.
Halbert?
Yes, Claudia will recognize Halbert, and you're to recognize the three and four of the year finalists, I have information on them.
Good.
And I've got some baskets, so you could present each one of them, little snack baskets, just a.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Good deal. Consider agenda, anything there that used to be pulled, are they okay with that?
You probably want to pull the annual report off. I mean, we're going to discuss it in briefing with the outside auditors, but then they can make just a quick presentation.
That would be YH, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I'll get somebody to make a motion when we get there on that, we'll get that removed and go on to the rest.
And are we going to put it in where we vote on it tonight?
Yes, it will be voted on in council, but just not under.
We'll just move it right after the considered agenda.
Right, right.
Okay. Other council acts, we have a public hearing for the considered request of Nestor Kumanas to do the first reading, and then we have Marita with the public hearing regarding CDBG funds and the Home Investment Partnership Program funds, which we're all okay, we've got money to pay everything this year. Is that right?
The request equals the amount available.
Yes. Ella Lee, great. Then considering the sale of the city property, appointment of boards, anything there that would be appointed?
Yes, we do, downtown Odessa, Tom would like to appoint Chris Castillo.
Okay, for that.
For his appointee.
Okay.
And for the planning and zoning, Malcolm would like to appoint James Anderson.
Okay.
Is that the one that we got in this year, I mean, this week?
Yes, last week.
Yeah.
Yes.
It didn't, who is he? I mean, it didn't give James Anderson. I didn't really see what he does, or was he the one that didn't fill out, there was a portion of it that, on what?
Yeah, he didn't fill out any type of qualification.
Yeah, any qualifications, so I didn't really know who he is.
No.
He left a blank. All he did was say he was interested in serving in the parks and the planning and zoning.
Okay, we'll hold off on that.
And he may be just fine, but when I read that.
He didn't fill it out.
No, he didn't fill it out. I didn't really know, I couldn't figure out who he was, I mean, you know, what he was bringing.
His father is deceased now, Arthur Ray Anderson.
Oh, Arthur Ray!
Yeah, that's his son, his younger son.
His younger.
Yeah, that's Wesley.
And I'm not saying.
His name's James.
Well, I said, I'm not saying that I'm opposed, I mean, don't misunderstand that, I just didn't know who he was, you know, usually they'll put a little blurb in there.
Yeah, I'm surprised he didn't.
Obviously, whatever you'd like to do.
Yeah.
Whatever, I had to move forward with it.
Okay. And that was, and he's going on?
District one.
District one.
Anything else, Norma?
I didn't know which I wanted to do, anything on the Odessa Housing Finance Corporation, I know Malcolm expressed interest, but we also received an application from Virgil Trower, that job, should we have received the application last week as well? So that's on the table.
With the council's pleasure there. I think Virgil brings it great, a lot of talent to the, because of his history, he's been on this board before. Nothing amazing from you, Malcolm, but I'm thinking that Virgil is, he's swung the sword before, and knows what he's doing.
Is this, is this instead of Malcolm, or is this the position that the council has, and then Malcolm would be on as well? Do we get one?
Just one.
Yeah, I got you.
I'm having a hard time understanding how we went from fill-up to a possible council member, to all of a sudden, we don't want a council member, when it would be perfectly fine, I don't see what's to do.
Well, and I, this is a really important, in terms of all of this housing stuff, this is pretty, this is a pretty important.
Absolutely, so am I not in this meeting with important things to decide on every single day?
Right, no, 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 I, yeah, I'm saying, this is really.
It is, it's very.
Malcolm, it doesn't, it's not your commitment to the city that I, of course, I'm thinking Malcolm has that talent, and in the history.
Virgil.
Virgil, Virgil, excuse me. Virgil has the history and the talent and the wherewithal to know what they're talking about, you're not going to have to explain anything to him. One of the things was the definition of that board member, is that not correct, from Odessa Housing Finance Corporation?
Yes, that is correct, it was directly from the bylaws of the.
Yeah, and I qualified underneath that.
I sent the qualifications to the council.
So I'm very much qualified for that position again, so.
I personally kind of like that if you've got the time, I personally like the fact that with all of this housing stuff that we're doing, that we would have somebody that could sort of speak back to the council about what the Odessa Housing Finance Authority is doing. I mean, I think there's some value to that. That's a problem I think we have, is that we're on all these committees and we never tell each other what we're doing on those committees. You know, you guys don't have any idea about the firm, and, you know, or, I, so I don't know that that's, I mean, that's a whole different subject, but if there was a connection between the council and the Odessa Housing Finance Corporation, I can see why that would be important, I mean, I've never seen Virgil come to one of these meetings to report, nobody's coming to us from the Odessa Housing Finance Corporation.
And that's one of the things that we had talked about, is having the boards have a representative to come and do an update to the council, we just haven't been, we've had a full briefing.
You've had so much?
Yes, but that is on the books to do, to have updates from each of the boards that should.
Well, I can sure see that that would be important, that this person would speak to council from time to time about what Odessa Housing Finance.
Did we have Virgil prior to our last meeting, or it just came?
No, it came in, I sent it last week, it came in last week.
Right, that's all I can say, I just know we have been.
Councils want to, it's up to council, do you want to table, do you want to go forward?
Can we table it? I'd rather table it.
Let's table that and tell them next time. Anything else? Everybody take your.
No, Detra, if you don't mind, you can get an appointee for the downtown Odessa, so they can.
I will do that. I guess my lady is not going to attend three for me, so I will work on plan B.
Thank you.
You might send her the same list, you believe. Anything else?
I'll send applications, just in case you're interested in reviewing those again.
Okay.
Okay, all the agenda items, now we need to move to Mylum Scholars in Progress program on recycling. Is this the same Claudia that's going to do that? Halbert and you?
No, it's two different things.
But I mean, it's the same lady?
Same client. Same client, yes, yes.
I'd like to review, man, so information is big.
Why are you?
If I'm not available to be on there, all of a sudden, I'd like to, why is he so special that he's always being recommended for?
Well, good afternoon, I am going to get this going in this video really quick, where is your main laptop, or?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I will do it as quick.
You want to talk a little bit about your program, it's going to take you a second to get this set up.
Yeah, this is, here. Hold on, let me tell you.
Where are you coming in? Is that everybody?
He's up here.
There's a little scholar right there.
A scholar in training.
Scholar in training.
Come on in, we have supporters from families, of course, this is a privilege to be here. I am Claudia Richards, and I am with Scholars in Progress at Mylum Elementary, I'm one of 25 teachers who lead this program for the gift to the talented first through fifth grade. This was a project, we let the kids do it, I'm just guided the project, and so he's ready to do it, no problem. Guys, would you want to introduce yourselves? What is your future, what do you want to do when you grow up, and all that you said? Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Yerica, and.
Do you have any future plans?
I don't know.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Annie, and I don't know what I'm going to do when I grow up.
I think you want.
Some of us don't either.
Bye, okay, she changed her mind.
Hi, I'm Sadie, and I want to be a baker.
Hello, I'm Jovi, and I want to be a baker like my dad.
Hello, I'm Joimi, and I want to be a pre-intellectualist.
Hello, my name is Zelia, and I want to be an actress when I grow up.
I serve 71 students at Mylum from first through fifth grade, these are my fifth graders that I will see ever again, unless they keep in touch with me, these are the parents who support one of the persons in the program, what we.
Keep on talking, I'm starting to work it out.
Let me tell you, we focus on different topics throughout the year, but one of the main things that we do is get the kids develop some skills that they would use for the 21st century. We want them to become problem solvers, we want them to become community leaders, and be able to cope in groups and teams, because some of them were going to be working on, and also on technology. We are very lucky that our district let us work on our own in the project that we are on. I have one of my, okay, here we go.
So which one?
Recycling projects.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, this is sensitive. There, that's it, okay, I'll tell you when you're quiet. I hope there is no commercial, of course. Okay, I'm going to stop it right there, go ahead. So I'll let the kids talk, because they were the ones who did it.
Good afternoon, my name is Yerica, we would like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to present our project, a doctor classroom, and let us show you an overview of it all.
Kibo Desa Beautiful is honoring a few local elementary students who are doing.
We actually like the. Almost 3,000, we wish them 60 pounds.
Hi, my name is Annie, and let me tell you about the purpose of our project, we began this school year with the focus of medieval times, we studied on how to become a knight, we found out that they helped their communities, so to become a knight, we would have to do some acts of kindness, and that's how this project began.
Hi, I'm Sadie, each one of my classmates was assigned to a classroom and adopted that classroom, we presented to the kids about recycling and what recycling was really about, we also presented about a data analysis lesson, how to read about charts, and how we were doing with recycling, it was really challenging, but I'm glad we did the recycle project.
Hello, my name is Jovi, and I just want to present the positives and negatives of our recycle project, a positive is that we didn't have to spend money or sell anything, another positive is that we had to, oops. Another, we also had to keep the, we also helped the environment in a small way, negative point is that we had to keep track of our pound, of each pound on Google slides, it was tough.
You know, Tony in the house, today I'm going to express some of the challenging times we had regarding this project, one challenge we faced was the weather, because we had to drop off the recycling in the outside bins, and sometimes the weather was cold, and sometimes the weather was hot, another, another challenge we faced was when the teachers weren't available at that time, and the classrooms were locked, this was hard for us, because we couldn't get the recycling, and then the last challenge we had was to get, to present to the students and teachers, it was tough and difficult, but we made it.
Hello, my name is Zelia Cobos, and what I thought was good about this project was that we didn't have to collect, we didn't have to let the custodians do the work, we did it all ourselves, we also used the bags provided by Kibo Desa Beautiful over and over again, how we did that was we would mix our bags after we'd weigh them, kind of like recycling in a way, we hope this project will encourage other schools to do the same, this project was really fun, and we thank all of you for letting us do this.
We would now like to present to you our recycling chant. Recycling magicians.
Now you see it, now it's something new.
Do you have any questions?
I like it.
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 Cold and wet, or hot, but what about the wind?
Surely you have some wind problems.
Yes, sir.
Oh, that's great.
Tony, tell us about the kids really quick, how the kids were looking forward.
Oh, the, our kids in our class, because we had to adopt a class, we, all the kids in their classrooms that we adopted were really excited, like every time we would come, we'd be like, we got this much, and they were so excited to see us, and every Tuesday, when we couldn't be there, they'd be like, and we'd come other days of the week, they'd be like, I thought you came Tuesday, where were you? And they got so excited, and they were glad that we did this recycling project.
That's awesome. We wish we could implement it in all these schools, of course, but, okay, thanks to y'all, thank you.
Maybe this will be the happiest it's been. So my parents, thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, thank you. I know there's some beautiful.
Best projection.
Our future leaders of recycling. Thank you.
Thank you.
You missed that one too far. I'm sorry?
Richard?
Is she here?
Thank you.
I like her, Richard.
No, she's Ortega.
Is it Ortega? No, it's Ortega, you're right.
Okay, good.
Cindy, you're on.
Our next item, council, is to go over the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2018, David Duree and Greg Peterson with the Weaver firm are here, and y'all had your books for a couple of weeks now, you can still call me with questions if you're going back through it, especially Peggy, she likes to ask me lots of questions, and that's great, she's gone through it page by page, I believe. What they're handing out is kind of an overview that we're going to go through, and then we will ask y'all to approve this in the council meeting tonight, so that we can submit it to GFOA this week. So I will turn it over to David, she.
We appreciate.
Do you have one, or do you need one?
That's a tough.
David, well.
You're going to have.
David, you are just so lovely, it's cute.
I know, there's no way. That was cute. We got five minutes, so Cindy mentioned that we're through with September 30, 18, this is that presentation, we've met with management, and we need to thank Councilman Bryant, Councilman Dean for sitting through the detail, hour and a half presentation over the days, we've gone through it in much detail, it's ready to release if you approve it here tonight, we've got updates from legal, we've got our files ready to go, and Greg Peterson has played a senior manager role in this one for the past couple of years, Greg got an official announcement, he's a new partner with Weaver, and so Greg will be kind of walking us through the first part of this. Congratulations. And I was going to, I was going to walk us through the second part, we'll try to, I mean, I understand you kind of like a break in between this and council, too, right? So we will go fast and high level, but if there's any questions, not only this month's issue, via Huracal, but we're here, available year round for any questions that you might have, any way we can help, we're just honored to be a part of the City of Odessa team here. Ready?
Great, all right, we'll just jump right in, so the first page was the overview, I just want to take a quick second, I'm on the slide with the state of Texas here, just to go over our firm real quick, some of you may not have heard of Weaver, so, we're actually the largest independent CPA firm in the Southwest, we have several different offices across Texas, and our government niche is actually our largest practice area in the firm. Next is the engagement team leadership, which David just went over, followed by our engagement team kind of structure, so something I do want to point out, and I think this is pretty unique to Weaver, is that, you know, as part of our normal audit assurance, we have a second partner review to go over our QC, and that's something you don't really see at a lot of other firms, and then we also have a very experienced IT department that helps us do some of our procedures, provides a lot of value-added analytics, especially when we're looking at vendor lists, dispersments, some of your high-risk audit areas, so.
They can run Qs on that database with the software that they've got, and point out stuff where, you know, social security numbers in the wrong place, or in the wrong file, or somebody posted.
Duplicate vendors, yeah.
Duplicate vendors, or somebody posted an entry Saturday night at 3:00 in the morning, I mean, they're, they can really just do stuff that's so efficient, running databases.
Yeah, really, really good value to the audit, so let's get forward to a few more pages where we have the actual audit schedule, this is very high level, again, we started planning back in December, started doing our initial field work, I guess around November, no, no, excuse me, what was it, July is when we started doing our internal testing, and then we continued that through our final field work through today, had our discussions last week, and then we're here today for our presentation, and then we'll be talking with Cindy for next year, shortly, shortly after this gets approved, so next is our audit process, so we audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, and because you have federal funds, we also audit under government auditing standards, which is just a little bit more restrictive, a higher level of assurances needed under government auditing standards, as part of our audit process, we also do a single audit, which is testing of your federal funds, and we audit that in accordance with the uniform guidance, we also do some compliance testing, where we test your Public Funds Investment Act laws, regulations, procurement, processes, and procedures, next, we take a risk-based prefer trial audit, so this is where we focus our attention on your high-risk areas, so improper revenue recognition, management override of internal controls, unauthorized expenditures, so we want to focus our time on these high-risk areas to ensure that there's not material misstatements in the financial statements. So in addition to just testing the numbers, the balances, we also do walkthroughs of your internal controls, so we test these significant transaction cycles, so we look at your cash receipt system, your cash dispersments, your investments, your grant accounting policies and procedures, purchasing, procurement, and payroll. So, just a second point here, I'd like to touch on for the single audit of the grant awards, so when we're doing our audit of your grants, we're not only testing compliance, but we also test internal controls over those compliance, so it's really a two-step process in order for us to give an opinion on your federal awards. So here we go, on page 14, this is really probably the meat and potatoes of this presentation, so we have issued an unmodified opinion on your financial statements, so that's a clean audit opinion, so that's the highest level of assurance that you can receive in an audit, we had no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, and no instances of non-compliance with any of the laws, regulations that we tested.
Maybe before we move from this one, that unmodified opinion does have what we call an EOM, we mentioned at the, at the meeting, it's an emphasis of matter paragraph, this particular opinion, a little bit different than we've had in the past because of this paragraph, because we implemented the other post-employment benefits, and it caused a prior period adjustment, so, and we can, we can show you that, that there's a paragraph in it that says it's clean, but by the way, there is a prior period adjustment for implementation of the new GASB 75, other post-employment benefits accounting that was done, you fix that at the beginning of the year, then you roll it through the year to where the end of the year is.
Yeah, so in addition to issuing an opinion just on the financial statements themselves, we also issued an opinion on the single audit, so we also issued an unmodified opinion over your single audit, which again is a clean, unmodified opinion, highest level of assurance you can receive, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, and no non-compliance.
All those no's are a positive thing, no, that's a positive.
Yeah.
That single audit was.
That was.
Transportation.
Yeah, the P.A. grant.
Both at the federal and state, good question, yeah, and there were no findings that came through at all, so this is.
Yeah, so the second page here is, so the first page, there's no, no issues concerning compliance, the second page is there were no issues concerning internal controls over that compliance. So on page 18, our auditor communications, so this is, as part of our auditing standards under government auditing standards, we have to make certain communications to those charged with governance, so we just want to let you know that there were no material errors that we identified, no irregularities, no illegal acts, there were no transactions for which there wasn't guidance for, we had no difficulties or disagreements with management, we feel that we are independent, so we had no independence issues, and there was no shopping around for second opinions.
And we had on the independence, and we, again, we mentioned this in the meeting, we helped prepare the financial statements this year as at a level more so than we had in the past, but you have to, your team management has the skills, knowledge, and experience to oversee that preparation and to take responsibility for those financial statements, so it didn't impair our independence at all, we have a lot of, a lot of clients that we do the financial statements, we have a few that they do the financial statements, this one. at a level more so than we had in the past, but you have to... Your team management has the skills, knowledge, and experience to oversee that preparation and to take responsibility for those financial statements. So it didn't impair our independence at all. We have a lot of clients that we do the financial statements. We have a few that they do the financial statements. This one, y'all have done your financials more in the past than you did this year. We took a little bit bigger role there, but it didn't impact the independence in any fashion.
So next is the financial highlights that David gave us.
So page 20, really quick. This is net position. So this is at the governmental activities. Here you've got two types of accounting, the fund accounting and then the government-wide accounting. This is government-wide governmental activities. All the governmental funds rolled up. Then you add capital assets, you add debt, you add depreciation, you add full accrual, and we come up with these numbers. And these are just the, what would be fund balance if it was over in the fund financials, but it's net position or equity if we were looking at a commercial financial statement. The net position went from $96 million in '17 under the governmental activity side up to $131 million in our year at the end of the 123118 year. The bulk of that is sitting up in net investment, capital assets, that the assets less the debt. Primarily, we've got a little bit in restricted. You can see how unrestricted last year was at $62 million deficit, and it dropped to only a $39 million deficit. So we had good positive numbers even though that we made the adjustment for the OPEB, the other post-employment benefit brought it down, pension brings it down, firefighters bring it down. So there's a lot of liabilities in there that are based on actuarial calculations, and we can see that in the balance sheet if you want to get into those financial statements. On the business-type activities side, you can see $137 million last year total net position, $164 million in the current year net position.
I will, for those of you that are new to the financial statement, we were never in an unrestricted deficit until we implemented the pension plan where we have to record the actuarially determined unfunded liability. And our fireman's plan was the biggest component of that. And so to take it from 62 down to 39 in a year is pretty remarkable. Both pension plans are doing better. Our OPEB implementation was pretty insignificant in comparison with what's happened with other cities. So it was a good year. Plus, our excess sales tax helped a lot too.
If you go to the financial statement, that particular graph comes straight out of page nine on the financial statement. Page 10 on the financial statement shows the changes in net position, so those positive numbers we were talking about. You can see the $37 million increase in net position in 2018 for governmental activities.
One.
Oh, yeah, 21. So 10, yeah. 10 is in the financial statement.
Thank you.
21 is the handout. If you're looking for these numbers in the financial statement, it's on page 10. Yeah, thank you. 13 million in '17 for business-type activities, 27 million, so a good positive increases in both the business-type activities and governmental activities, increase in net position. If you look at our net position for the primary government, that's all of them rolled up for the past five years. You can see net investment and capital assets continues to increase. Again, as our assets less our debt and our restricted and our unrestricted. So our unrestricted was down below zero. It was deficit there for a couple of years and then went up to a positive in 2018. This is both government and business added together total. Revenues, financial statement highlights here on page 23, and this correlates to page 34 in the financials, but you can see water and sewer revenues all the way up to 70 million, solid waste. The blue line, the 2018 line is the blue line, and the sales tax number that jumped up there in our 2018 year, over $50 million compared to the last five years. Outstanding debt, revenues were going up, and on page 24, outstanding debt continues to be paid off, paid down, down to that blue number again, about $120 million in our 2018.
Because our now...
Well, we've got room in the graph. We can pick a couple. Page 25 of the report shows a comparison on the governmental funds. So now this graph switched over to the fund financials, the governmental funds, just looking at those governmental funds revenues, '17 and '18 side by side, and I've just highlighted the property tax, the green, light green, $36,975,000, that top number. That was $34,339 in the prior year. The city sales tax, $53,592 on the governmental funds. That was $37,885 in the prior year. You can see the increases there in the pie chart, again, straight out of the financial statements. Proprietary funds on page 26 are revenues and the proprietary funds. This is water, sewer, solid waste, those types of funds rolled up. We've got waters, the largest piece, $54,131,000 in 2018, and that was $44,552 in 2017 for proprietary funds. Then we did a comparison on page 27. I'm going quick. Please stop, but am I good to keep sliding through?
Yeah.
Public safety, I just, we always like to find out on page 27, the volume of expenditures in the governmental funds for public safety and then public works. That's obviously where the city spends their money. Proprietary funds on page 28, these are just two years, '17 and '18 side by side, personal services, supplies, and then other services where the water fund is at. The expenditures going up in that year. And page 29, this is, we looked at the fund balance on the fund financials, and we looked at those five categories. Remember, non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned, and there was some discussion at the meeting the other day about what those categories are and what it means. We've got unassigned dollars that's available to the city without a tag on it for any of these other restrictions, commitments, or assigning of $50 million.
But I will remind you that the $50.3 million includes $22 million of ours 60-day and our 25-day amounts that we set aside.
Yeah.
For GAAP accounting, those don't get classified as assigned or restricted because it's a council action that set aside those funds. It's not an external source, so it's part of unassigned. So just keep that in mind, that that's where your 60- and 25-day amounts that we hold back are. Okay?
Yeah, thank you. You got Ms. Dean's question before she asked?
Yeah. Well, I was...
She was gonna get there.
I wasn't yet. I was just gonna say, be sure and say that, because I kept, when I was going through these, I was thinking, wow, $50 million.
We're in there.
You really don't have it.
And there's a no in the financials.
There is. I know.
You have to pick a 150 pages.
I got there.
On the proprietary fund balance on page 30, 66% of that $153 million is sitting up in investment capital asset. Again, assets less debt. Page 31 is the general fund budget actual comparison. The numbers we missed in the actual statement, but we adopted a budget with $82 million in revenues. It had $97 million in expenditures for the general fund. Actual came in at $109 million in revenues and only $84 million in expenditures. So we had $27 million more in revenues than we were budgeting, and we spent $12.7 million less in expenditures, giving us that $39 million, $39.7 million.
Okay, and let me clarify. You don't adopt a budget that's that much more expenditures than revenues. This is your final budget, so it includes at the end of the year when we have outstanding encumbrances and all the carryover of supplementals that y'all award. That goes into the next year's budget because you've already allocated that money to them. So that's why it comes out as a net negative, because those balances rolled into the year. So you adopted a balanced budget, or the new ones haven't gone through that process, but we adopted a balanced budget. But when we do those rollovers into the next year for encumbrances and contracts and all of that, then you have this situation because it didn't get spent in the year you authorized it. Okay? Does that make sense?
Page 33, so we grabbed the CAFER's, the comprehensive annual financial reports, and understand y'all have six cities that you kind of compare yourselves to. We grabbed Abilene, Amarillo, Lubbock, Wichita Falls, and Odessa. So we got Odessa's population 2018, and this is coming straight out of the CAFER, and sometimes that came from a more reliable source than another, but this is what they're reporting. $124,000 in Odessa, $122 in Amarillo, $204 in Lubbock, $261 in Wichita Falls, $104. The tax rates on those same cities on page 34, Odessa, .4932, Abilene, $7751, $463, $64 in Amarillo, $53.8 in Lubbock, and then .70598 in Wichita Falls. So I guess Amarillo's a little lower than us, but if you look at the property tax values on page 35, Odessa's property tax value is $7.4 billion, $1.000 billion, right? I'm gonna say that right. $6 billion, $101 million for Abilene, so our values are more than Abilene, about half of Amarillo, less than half of Lubbock, and more than Wichita Falls at $4.9 billion. City sales tax, page 36, Odessa, $53,592, and this is in the, at the fund level, reported back in the back. Actually, this is just the general funds. Cindy, we talked about that, and we thought general fund tax dollars would be of more value. So we pulled general fund from each of these, so we're still comparing general fund on each city. Odessa's general fund was $53.5 million, $34.7 for Abilene, Amarillo, $57.4, Lubbock, $67.4, Wichita Falls, $27. Debt per capita, Odessa's $957 on this last report, 2018 report. And you can see Abilene, Amarillo, Lubbock, and Wichita Falls, there's a common there. And Amarillo, $1,000.
Paul, you need to grab those numbers.
$9,800.
You know, it was really interesting to see that the population comparison and then to the sales tax. Like Lubbock, for instance, you know, their population is over twice as much as ours, and their sales tax is only $14 million. I mean, that must say that our people spend more money.
But there's another component that you have to think about, is that some of it could be affected by how much of the sales tax is given to, like a development corporation, like we give the quarter of us.
Right.
So this is just what hits general fund. So what they're giving out, we don't know how, you know, where that's actually going to. So this is just what hit their general fund. So they could have collected twice what we did and just gave out more than what we give out to our development corp.
I mean, it's easy to add a column and show general fund, sales tax dollars.
And then you could do total.
Total city line, sales tax dollars next to it.
We can think about that next.
I had some places in the financial statement, but it was just to solidify how these numbers came from the financials and looking at the capital assets and the role of capital assets from last year to this year, the role of debt from last year to this year, and to point out how that proprietary adjustment worked and how it worked its way through the financial statements. It was to mark where TCDRS liability, net pension liability was, to look at Odessa firefighter, net pension liability, and that big liability, and where it was, and I can go to those if you'd like to. We looked at them in detail in the meeting the other day, and we're here to answer any questions. It's my pleasure, and we're just honored to be a part of the city team.
And through the rest of this is the single audit report and other things that y'all can read. I know we're pressed for time, because we have a couple of more.
And David will come back out. Yeah, we can make a brief. We got whatever you like. We're gonna pull off the consent agenda, and then we'll call you up to make a brief presentation. Okay. Might be even more high level than this, right?
Right, just the, yeah.
Just the greater side, yes.
You might stress our debt per capita compared to the pick six. You might stress our, at least mention our debt per capita compared to the pick six because, I mean, we're way low on page 37.
You want me to introduce you or Mr. Peterson? Um, I'll probably take it.
You got it.
Yeah, I think some of those numbers would really be...
There's some things here that, because people are not gonna remember much of what you say, so give them a couple of things that they can remember.
Right. And an unqualified opinion is at the top of that list, or unmodified.
Thank y'all.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Greg, I see.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We asked you about that in the meeting, and you said, maybe.
My fingers crossed.
Was that mine?
Was that mine?
Congratulations. Thank you, David. Mr. Lander, can we get an update on Midland's incentives for workforce housing?
This is early on here to give you an opportunity if you had any follow-up questions. This came up at that last meeting. I wasn't here. You asked Natasha to do some research, and you should have gotten that email memo from her the next day, I believe, with that summary. So that's really where we are now. If you have direction for us or the manager, if you had questions, this is just your opportunity. If you need us to go out and try to get some more information.
But we were under the wrong assumption, thinking that we in development gave those incentives, because they did not, right? It came out of their general fund.
General fund.
Because we were wondering how they were getting by with that. They were, they did not. That isn't where it came from.
And it was $4,500 instead of that?
They were talking about it.
It looks like a tier, what, or a tier?
That's what.
Is it right when they're a tier? Were they just straight $4,500?
It was $4,500 for those guidelines that meant were laid out.
Yeah. Thank you for doing that, because... But I was sort of kind of thinking, maybe they had figured out how to use the development.
Well, hopefully we can find a way to properly move out.
We, I think I mentioned this last time, but the city of Odessa had a similar program back in 2007, 2006, but we utilized water, I mean, funds from the water sewer fund, and the premise that ultimately a home would be connected to the water and sewer system. And that program was structured in such a way that we did have a minimum and maximum price range on the homes. The homes were required to be of a certain square footage, minimum three bedrooms, two to have certain amenities, washer dryer room, and that sort of thing. And that was, that was, the funding was very similar to what Midland was doing in that the funding came at the end, that closing, and it was essentially just a financial stipend for builders to build within a certain price range with certain amenities. There was also an added criteria or bonus dollars, if you will, if they built in one of the city's CDPT targeted areas. And I think under that home, we built about 224 houses.
You have any questions on that?
And then did we just stop doing that?
Well, it was about the time. We did, we had it for a few years, and then the drought hit, so that water is flooded.
And all of those water lines and those, we're all still functioning.
Okay, Mr. Lenders, legal, open meeting?
This is a follow-up in the ongoing plan by the staff to just continue to remind the city council and then following this just short reminder to you, we will follow this up with reminders with all of our boards. Just, you're already familiar, but just to remind you that we do have this open meetings act in Texas, and that requires us to, requires you to read your city secretary to do this agenda. And the purpose of this agenda is to explain what you're gonna talk about and possibly take action on in a summary that a reasonable person in town could read that, not necessarily know the whole story, but they would know enough that, oh, I want to know more about that. And so if you're buying something, you need to include who you're buying it from, what it is you're buying, and what the dollar amount is if you're spending money. And then you can only take action on items that are on that agenda. So a question is always coming up, well, does that, what if, what if one of you has a question about something that you just thought of or on your way and hear a citizen ask you or something? And so you can, you can always, in a public meeting, ask a question, and if staff knows the answer, legal or any staff that's there, you can take advantage of that opportunity to ask that question. We can answer it. But you, it's, it would be inappropriate to use a question about an item, not on the agenda, to kind of start a discussion about something. So there's a difference in asking a question. The staff may say, oh, the answer to that's $10 million. The answer is, no, we haven't done that. But if you then wanted to say, well, why haven't you, or what about, well, now you're kind of getting into a discussion. And the proper way to do that will be for the staff to say... And the proper way to do that will be for the staff to say, well, we will put that on a future agenda, we'll send, we'll do some research, we'll get the answer for you, send that to you. And that's what, that happens pretty regularly, we do that, that happens with all of our boards from time to time. But you just, we just want to remind people, and we want the media and others to know that we, the council and all of our boards periodically do talk about that, and we remind ourselves that we know there's an open meetings, we know we're one to give the public notice before we talk, but sometimes we also, something just comes up and you may have a question, and we can certainly answer questions. It's just, I think most of us know the difference between when a question and answer starts kind of going into a discussion. And the catch, the problem with the discussion is, well, we don't really want to have a discussion about something because you haven't given notice. If the public knew you were going to talk about that other issue, well, somebody might have wanted to come and hear it or add in your comments. So that's all I wanted to mention today, and I wanted to start with y'all, we're going to kind of make the rounds. We have several different attorneys that sit with all of our different boards, but in some form and fashion, we're presenting that.
So are all of our boards subject to open meetings?
Not all of them. It depends, Norma has a list of those that have kind of, we call it final decision-making authority, really it's not, it's not always so final because most of that comes back to you, but there are several of your boards that do. And we often go ahead and post agendas and kind of act as if some of those boards were legally subject to the open meetings law, even if they're not.
Which ones are not?
Is there? That's what I was gonna...
It would be, let me send you a response back on that. There's a long list of them, and so I will send you the whole list so I don't leave some out. But again, we try to, with all of our boards, use agendas, it's a good practice, a best practice, although it's not legally required to comply with all the open meetings posting and notice requirements for all of our, we have boards, committees, advisory groups, we kind of group them all together, and that's a project that city secretary and legal do periodically to update that list. That's another item on the board project that Norma and legal are working on to update.
She'll send that to all of us.
I'll send that to all of us.
And so when you, when they're posted, is that just on the city's website?
Well...
What does that mean? Because I know a lot of these groups that don't host.
Where, when the city is, the legal posting we do is both at the location of the meeting, at city hall, so for council, that's one and the same. We actually now have a couple of places, I think, at city hall, we're...
Inside and outside.
Inside and outside. You have to do it outside so that it's available twenty-four hours a day in case somebody wanted to come by, that's why we have that specific board.
For all committees, for all...
For all boards that are subject to the open meetings law. Now, again, some cities try to just post that for everybody. We post it for many of our boards, all those that we believe are required. And so that's something you could think about, you might want to provide more notice, but that is more work, and some of those groups are very highly kind of technical, some of the, a couple of those meetings the mayor goes to are literally groups that you may or may not feel inclined to do posting typically don't.
And if there's something we want to talk about, like I had something and I called Michael, is that the right, correct way to do it?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Always to let the city manager know. You know, structurally, we have the city secretary and the city manager's office compile that, legal reviews it, but, and you could talk to any of us, but it all needs to go to the manager before it gets placed on the agenda.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Something I ask a quick question of Norma?
Sure.
Our combined meeting, city council and county commissioners, has anything been scheduled?
No, the mayor's out of town all this week, so he wanted me to try to work with the county to try to get after he gets back to town.
Okay.
So it's in the works.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience, as well as the ODC joint work.
I was gonna say, there's an ODC joint.
I will send out some notices as soon as I can.
Okay, I gotta clarify one thing on this agenda again. Is Claudia going to recognize Halliburton? Okay.
Yes, Claudia's gonna present a present award to Halliburton for their...
And then, people, you're doing the...
Sweet thing.
All right. Aside that, I think that's it.